I'll call the December 7th meeting of the common council to order at 7 o'clock. Mr. Fred Foul, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
The flag of the United States of America to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible of liberty and justice for all.
That would have been really dramatic if that had been a flag. Evan Lynn Lee, would you call the roll?
Mr. Eyre?
Present.
Mr. Boyce?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. O'Connor?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Present.
Mr. Smith?
Present.
Mr. Sparks? Ms. Wiles?
Present.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Okay, you have a call.
Thank you. Can I have approval of the minutes from our November 23rd meeting?
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the meetings, the minutes of our November 23rd meeting. There's a hand vote. All's in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero.
Mr. President, I would move that we amend the agenda to remove proposed development presentation number two and consider ordinance 77-11-21 before ordinance number 84-12-21.
Second. There's a motion to amend the agenda and a second, there's a hand vote. All's in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended and a second, there's a hand vote. All's in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero. Petitions by citizens that are present. I do not have any cards in front of me, so I will assume there are none. And we'll have to move on to committee reports. Roads Committee.
Yes. Roads Committee, Matt, on December 3rd. We got updates from the engineering department on a few of the items that are coming in front of the city in the next few months. 146th Street lighting, the removal is set to begin in early 2022 and the install is anticipated to begin in March of 2022. All for Mr. O'Connor. The 20... Very exciting. The 2022 road street rehabilitation contract is out for bid. The Kerrigan Road over Morse, that lighting is potentially able to be installed this year. They were not sure, but they were looking at the week of the 13th of December. We mentioned this at the last meeting, but just so everybody is aware, River Road at State Road 32 will be closed for a bit in January. That's the River Road section, not State Road 32. That will be for utility work as we are looking at the roundabouts that will be coming to River Road and State Road 32, 38.
Is that south of 32?
South of 32, yep. And the hospital is aware of that as well. South Allisonville Trail, the bid is, bid went out November 17th and construction is slated for 2022 as well. Nickel Plate Trail, the city submitted a grant application to the next level trails grant with IDNR. That went in November and we should hear back by March on that one. And I think those were a lot of the high level updates from our meeting.
Thank you. Any questions for Roads Committee? Finance Committee?
Thank you, Mr. President. We met December 2nd. Greg O'Connor, Darren Peterson, Megan Wiles and myself. Holly Ramone and Matt Light discussed the 2022 SALLY ordinance revision. David Dale discussed with us an appropriation transfer for maintenance department for the facility maintenance of City Hall and the public safety building. Brad Arnold with the Noblesville Police discussed appropriation transfer for the police department parking service. And also another transfer for parking security in the new parking garage at Livingston Building. And the claims come to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Any questions for the Finance Committee?
Mr. President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I would move that we approve the claims that submitted.
Second.
There's a motion to approve the claims and a second, there's a hand vote. All's in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero. Previously discussed ordinances. Council to consider ordinance 80-11-21 and ordinance approving additional appropriations in the Parks Programs Fund to provide funding for costs associated with an increase in golf sales. Barris?
Thank you, council members. This is, as mentioned, second reading of this additional appropriation ordinance. What you're being asked to do is to appropriate revenues that have already been received by the Parks Department for golf and other recreational related activities, basically authoring, authorizing them to spend the proceeds that they've already brought in. Happy to answer any questions or otherwise I will stop there.
Any questions? If there are none, I will open up the public hearing for ordinance 80-11-21.
Mr. President, seeing no one come forward, I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 80-11-21 and a second, there's a hand vote. All's in favor, raise your right hand. It is closed.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. O'Connor.
I move that we approve ordinance 80-11-21 as presented.
Second.
There's a motion to approve ordinance 80-11-21 and a second, there's a roll call vote.
Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Ayes, zero nay, the ordinance is approved.
Thank you. Council to consider ordinance 81-11-21 and ordinance eliminating the Parks Capital Fund as amended. Sam Barris?
Thank you, council members. Again, because this is the second reading, I'm not going to go into too much detail on this unless people have questions, but essentially we are eliminating a fund that is no longer used and serves no operational or accounting purpose for the city to simplify our accounting. Happy to answer any questions.
Can you remind us again of the amendment? Wasn't it just a scrip?
Correct, yes, that's right. So the original draft of the ordinance had us depositing the roughly $320,000 that's in the fund into the general fund at the end of the year. This changes that to keep it in the, move it to the Parks Fund just to keep it earmarked for park-related purposes, which was council's original intent with this fund.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. President? I would move that we approve ordinance...
You need to amend it.
We need to amend it, so I move that we amend ordinance 81-11-21 as presented.
Second.
Motion to amend ordinance 81-11-21 as presented and a second, there's a hand vote. All's in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero? No.
No. Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance 81-11-21 as amended.
Second.
Motion to approve ordinance 81-11-21 as amended and a second, there's a roll call vote.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Ayes, zero nay, the ordinance is approved.
Thank you. Council to consider ordinance 82-11-21 and ordinance modernizing the Parks Non-Reverting Operating Fund, also known as the Parks Program Fund. Mr. Barris?
Thank you, council members. So again, second reading of this, but essentially we have a fund, the Park Program Fund, that is, again, collects park program fees and golf fees and the Parks Department uses those fees to operate their programs. This, the ordinance for that fund was written decades ago and lists some revenue sources that are no longer applicable to the city and then also doesn't list some revenue sources that it probably should. So it's basically a statutory cleanup exercise to make sure that our city code accurately describes the revenue sources for this fund. Happy to answer any questions. We also have our Parks Director here, I believe.
So this doesn't eliminate, we can still have go-kart races if we want to.
Again, up to you.
Okay.
Up to the Parks Director. It does not preclude us from having go-kart races.
Thank you. Any other questions? If there are none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance 82-11-21 as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve ordinance 82-11-21 and a second, there's a roll call vote.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes, zero nay, the ordinance is approved.
Thank you. New ordinances for discussion. Council to consider ordinance 72-10-21A and ordinance amending the salary ordinance for appointed officials and employees of the city of Noblesville for 2022.
Motion to introduce?
Second.
Holly Ramone.
Good evening. As stated in your attached letter, the amended salary indicates the additional targeted increases beyond the 2% COLA that was previously approved. This salary ordinance does set the maximum salary range for all positions with the new grade structure that is based on the consultant's compensation analysis that uses the minimum, midpoint, and maximum range of salaries. Unlike our previous structures, most positions are below the maximum amounts that are listed on the salary ordinance. The total amount that these allocated adjustments is $557,000 total. This would be in addition to the $603,000 that was allocated for the 2% increases. Again, that was what was previously approved through, I think we had gone before you in October for that salary ordinance. So as discussed during the Finance Committee meeting, this equates to a gap of $160,000 above the $1 million appropriation. Therefore, a request will be made in the first meeting in January for a transfer of that $160,000 from the 100 series, the personal services contingency. I would also like to note, as I feel you're all aware of, we do have those two new positions that are on the salary ordinance. One is for a government relations liaison for the fire department and the other is for a, it's a hybrid position for a golf professional for the Parks Department. And we would be happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding those two new positions. And if you don't mind me asking, before that, we would request your consideration of approving the salary ordinance on the first reading. The payday for these new salaries go into effect on January the 7th, but the actual pay period actually starts December 13th. And this would give our department staff and payroll staff adequate time to do the necessary paperwork and salary adjustments to the payroll system. Thank you. And again, we're happy to answer any questions you may have regarding those two new positions.
Questions?
President, just a comment. I wanted to commend Holly and her team and the administration for doing the heavy lifting. This wasn't something that got done quickly. It took quite a bit of manpower and time and brought in a consultant to help us right size and look at, look at all these positions and so we didn't do this lightly. I think there's been a lot of time and resources put into it. So it's something that we hadn't done in a number of years and it was time to do it. And I think you did a fabulous job putting all this together, just a lot of work.
Thank you.
So with that, Mr. President, I would make a motion that we waive the rules and pass ordinance 72-10-21A on first reading.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules and approve ordinance 72-10-21 on the first reading and a second, there's a hand vote. All's in favor, raise your right hand.
President, I would move that we approve ordinance 72-10-21A as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve ordinance 72-10-21A and a second, there's a roll call vote.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
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 Ayes, zero nay, the ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, next, council to consider ordinance 83-12-21 and ordinance amending ordinance 41-10-17 concerning health benefits for certain retired and appointed employees, elected officials of the city of Noblesville.
Move to introduce?
Second.
Holly Ramone.
Thank you. As stated in your attached letter, the amendment contains some job title updates for eligible appointed officials in accordance with the 2021 and 2022 salary ordinance. Language was also updated regarding the information concerning COBRA eligibility and information on the Medicare supplement plans that the city offers to eligible retirees. Thank you for your consideration and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? See you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Previously discussed ordinance. Council to consider ordinance 77-10-21 and ordinance for a change of zoning from R2 low to moderate density, single-family residential and RMH residential mobile home park to R5 multifamily residential and PB planned business with the FH flood hazard district remaining in, remaining as is for approximately 48 acres in the 7377 block of East 146th Street, North Side, North Side. And I'll also read the new ordinances for discussion. Council to consider ordinance 84-12-21 and ordinance for a change of zoning from R5 multifamily residential PB planned business and FH flood hazard to R5 PB, FH PB residential commercial flood hazard planned development, including the adoption of a preliminary development plan ordinance and associated waivers for approximately 48 acres in the 7300, 7700 block of East 146th Street.
Motion to introduce?
Second.
Chris Aniello.
Good evening. This item before you contains approximately 46 acres. It is located north of 146th Street and west of River Road. The properties that are not in the shaded areas are properties that are currently not being considered. Do you guys not have your...
We do not.
We do not.
I can see it in the reflection, but...
You can? Now maybe?
Yes!
There we go.
Oh my God, much better.
I just didn't hit all the buttons. You didn't have this set up for me. I'm gonna blame it on someone else, but anyway. So getting back to this, this is a, again, a request for rezoning of this property and the other part of this is a planned development overlay. As you can see by the existing zoning map, we have mostly R2 zoning in the area here. There is some RMH, which is residential mobile home park. And then the darker green areas here are actually flood hazard areas. The flood hazard areas will not change. Those areas will still be designated as they currently are today on this zone map. The only thing that will be changed again are basically the areas currently zoned RMH and those areas zoned R2. Most of this area will be zoned R5, which is multifamily. There is a portion of this property here that will be zoned PB planned business. This very corner property here, which is kind of left out of this mix, is... This very corner property here, which is kind of left out of this mix, is controlled by Hamilton County. It's supposed to be right away. I'm, we're working on those problems to resolve this. This actually was acquired back in like 1993 by Hamilton County. It still shows up as a parcel of property and not right away. So we are actually working through that issue now. That doesn't really affect this development as such. So again, the proposal is to create basically several different types of uses. Again, this map would show this area, which is currently would be rezoned to PB planned business. It currently shows approximately four different commercial structures. That could be, that could end up being a single structure. It could end up being two structures. At this point, that is an unknown. The area that basically is in the darker blue is for the area of the traditional multifamily uses. The area here that's in sort of this pink area is for the age restricted. And then the area outlined in green here are for the two and three-story townhomes. This is a, the comprehensive master plan does note this area as a preservation natural area, so that would be the areas that are currently zoned flood hazard. It also talks about this area being infill residential and mixed-use residential. This item was before the architectural review board. I will show you some elevations of, this is the two-story townhome elevations. We have the three-story townhome elevations. This is a proposal for the age-restricted. And then this would be a proposal for what is the traditional multifamily. Again, all of this did go through the architectural review board and it was basically approved by the ARV and sent forward to the planning commission council with recommendations for adoption. This would be a proposal for what the buildings for the retail area could look like. Again, you can see a lot of, there's a lot of brick on the building, different colors to make. And it is, it does have articulation in the fact that there are projections and there are recesses throughout that building. At the planning commission meeting, we did have a couple of individuals that spoke, I don't want to say necessarily against the project, but they did have some questions. One of the individuals or the couple that spoke basically reside at this piece of property here. As you can see, this whole entire development surrounds that piece of property. They were not interested in selling. They did ask that they install a mound and fencing. Planning staff was against that. Mounding basically has to be done properly in order not to create drainage issues. Fencing, you know, is something that, you know, if a piece of it gets knocked down, even though the HOA is usually responsible for maintaining it, you know, it's, it's a long time before it does get maintained. And if this entire parcel was surrounded by a fence and mounding, it would basically look like a little enclosed fort, so to say. Mill House Development did reach out to them, did propose a substantial, a substantial landscape area, again, around their entire property. They also made some concessions in regards to parking in the back. Parking faced a little differently and if cars parked back there, the lights would have maybe shined into their area. They removed that parking and placed that parking on the opposite side of the street. So therefore, that did not become an issue. This was a proposed buffer that was proposed. If you will look at the bottom, this is what we would require for a buffer. This is what they were willing to do at installation. So they initially agreed in concept to this. They did later contact Mill House and said they weren't so sure. And I understand they've contacted Mill House again and possibly wanting Mill House to purchase their property. So.
It's up in the air.
Pardon?
Said it's up in the air.
Yeah, that piece of property is kind of up in the air. So basically, there were a couple of other individuals that did have questions at the meeting. Those individuals currently resided in the mobile home parks and they were concerned with what was going to be done with their mobile homes because they actually own the mobile homes. The representative from Mill House did speak at the planning commission meeting and did explain, you know, what were as going to happen in the future. Those individuals were a little bit upset because the owners of the property supposedly are not, were not being forthcoming in that they were selling the mobile home park, although the mobile home park doesn't own the trailers that are in the mobile home park. So as for the planning commission staff report, if you read it, it was a part of your, a part of your packet. The planning commission did note there were several waivers that were granted or they voted to grant, along with several stipulations. Both of these ordinances were sent to you with a seven favorable and two opposed to the motion to adopt this. With that, I will ask if you have any questions of staff. If not, in the audience, we do have the attorney, we do have a representative from Mill House, and we also have the engineering firm representative here.
Okay.
Ms. Yelton, I noted in the staff did not agree or was not supporting the reduction in parking spaced eight and a half feet for 20% of the parking lot totals.
Yes.
That rectified in planning commission?
We did, okay. So they proposed some eight and a half foot wide parking spaces. I believe that was rectified or addressed at the planning commission.
Yep, I remember it was. I mean, I think they were talking about compact car parking.
Right.
And it was, the, the plan that we have in front of us does not have, the way that it was currently laid out in the plan does not reflect that. So they just wanted to leave that in there just in case and it was for that purpose, from what I understand. It's still in there. Planning commission left it in there with that, with that as their caveat, that that's what the purpose was for.
Meet the parking count without those spaces being counted?
I'm sorry?
Do we meet the parking count without those spaces being counted?
Okay. So basically what you get into is for the commercial area, it is very difficult at this time because those buildings are just, I'm gonna say conceptual, because our parking requirements are laid out on, I'm gonna say, specific uses. So in other words, a restaurant would require more parking than just a retail, a retail store. So it's hard for us to, you know, actually calculate those parking spaces for those particular areas. If you're asking if there is sufficient parking for the apartment uses, there is sufficient parking for the apartment uses. They do have on-street parking. The other thing that I did not say is that all of these streets internal to this are private streets. They will not be maintained by the city. They will be maintained by the HOA that, that basically will be over that area.
Okay. Question is, is the reduction in the parking space size to reduce the total number of spaces or is it done to respond to the market and smaller cars?
I don't know. You'll have to ask that question of the applicant.
Okay. Then I will.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Misha Rabenowich. I'm an attorney with offices at 1 Indiana Square. Thank you for hearing our case tonight. Also with me here tonight is Brian Sheward, who is the civil engineer from Kimley Horn, and representative of Mill House, Lauren Baker. I think Joyce Anne did a nice job of summarizing the development plan, so I won't belabor a lot of the detail. I know I speak for Mill House and we're really excited to be able to present this project tonight. It represents roughly $118 million investment in Noblesville and we're excited to see this move forward. We certainly have spent a lot of time with the planning staff, with the mayor's office and others to get, to get here and get to a detail level that we think is really nice. So just to summarize briefly, there's 340 market rate apartments with 525 parking spaces. The retail, 29,000 square feet of retail with parking at a ratio of five per 1,000 square feet. The age-restricted multifamily is 55 and over. There's 132 units with 182 parking spaces. And then there's the for-sale multifamily, 104 townhomes with 250 parking spaces. To get to your point, Counselor Peterson, on, on the parking, I think it's market that we anticipate a certain number of smaller vehicles. That is not included in the parking count numbers that I just gave you, so it's, it's not absolutely necessary. We'd remove it if, if that was important to the counselors, but it seemed to make sense. Just talking quickly about the access. So there are two access points off of, off of 146th Street and two access points off of River Road. We've worked closely with city highway and the county highway to work through those access issues there. I wanted to address quickly our work with the neighbor that Joyce Anne mentioned in the first plan commission meeting. They raised some concern about the buffer. We've met with them a couple of times, worked very hard and come up with a solution that they were agreeable to. I don't think ultimately they did agree, but what we, what Joyce Anne showed you was a presentation of really double the amount of landscaping around the perimeter of their property. And then there's another holdout property where we agreed to do the same thing. And then also, as she explained, we, we adjusted the parking on the south side of that private drive such that there's parallel parking and the headlights would not be directed toward those neighbors' yard. So with that, again, I don't want to belabor what Joyce Anne said. If there are any questions from the counselor, we're happy to answer.
It wouldn't be a council meeting if we didn't discuss streetlights and parking. So we've got both those out of the way now. It does feel lightly parked, just at first glance. And maybe it's just the exhibits, but it feels a little underparked, but I guess it's, it meets the ordinance. Okay. Any other questions?
President, I had one. I just wanted to confirm the 146th Street entrance exits. Those are right in, right out, correct?
That's correct.
And River Road would be probably both directions, I assume.
Yeah. Brian, do you want to confirm?
Yeah. Hi, good evening. Brian Sheward with Kimley Horn Associates, offices at 250 East 96th Street, Suite 580. The northern river entrance is full access, so everything. The entrance to the south, so the southern river, is restricted. So you can make a left in, right out, and that's something that we're working with the city engineering on right now. We have a traffic study in and we're, we're talking with Ally and Jim specifically about that. And then the two on 146th are not full access. The western one is a eastbound left in, right in, right out. So it's three-quarter. So you cannot exit and turn left to the east, if you follow me. That's restricted. And then the eastern 146th Street is right in, right out only. So just simple as that, but there's quite a few things.
That's closer to the intersection, that makes sense.
Correct. Correct.
So if you're gonna pull out and go east, then you need to go to River Road off and then hit the stoplight and then turn.
That's right. Yeah. Mr. Peterson, I was gonna mention too, the, the graphic that we put together when we looked at unit counts, one-bedroom studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, as well as the townhomes, as well as the assumption on what the retail component could be. The parking that's shown in the PD exceeds the, the minimum parking for all that. And then it's really just a matter of how you allocate parking to what's logically, logically closest to that parking spot. And that's what we tried to do with one of the graphics in the PD.
It seems spread out, so maybe that's just, it just looks light, so, thank you.
Are you gonna mark the compact spaces, compact car only, or?
No, that's a good question. I mean, and to be clear, what's shown in the plan, the site plan that's presented, there are no eight and a half foot stalls in this entire plan as drawn. It was a flexibility option should, say, the retail component have, it be developed in a certain way or, and with that percentage allowed to be compact spaces, it's not a huge pickup. If we took that percentage and we made them from nine to eight and a half feet, probably only adding just a few spots, but it gives flexibility as we're moving forward in the detailed development plans for picking up a few spots in a few areas that could possibly use it, so. But normally speaking, they are marked when you have a compact, so somebody doesn't accidentally pull in with a big truck, so.
We'll take two.
And I would assume that since you've been talking with the county about access on 146th Street, there's, has there been discussion of a potential roundabout at River Road?
There have been conversations about that. And the plan, as you see in front of you, actually has proposed dual southbound lefts, so some pretty significant improvements onto the north leg of, I guess it would be the, the north leg of that intersection. Our understanding is, yes, there has been talks, but there's not funding and it's not a specific project yet. So we have our traffic study in with the county as well as the city, and I think that was submitted two or three weeks ago. That's not the first time they've seen it. We've been having conversations for better part of a few months, but I'm sure that'll be more of a conversation.
Certainly with the development of the retail component there at that corner.
Correct.
It will be impacting, I would anticipate, by a roundabout.
Potential roundabout, wouldn't take out one of those retail.
Right.
And he's already got that lot.
Speculating, but that may have been the purchase of that lot in the corner for future, yeah.
Other questions? No other questions?
Mr. President.
Yeah.
I would move that we postpone a vote on ordinance 77-11-21 to our next meeting. We will also.
Hold on a second. Thank you. I need a, so there's a motion to postpone the vote on ordinance 77-11-21 to the next meeting in a second. This is a hand vote. All who are in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. See you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Counsel to consider ordinance 85-12-21 and ordinance amending ordinance 29-05-16 for approximately 41 acres known as Potter's Bridge Estates in the.
She's taking over.
2200 block, 220200 block of Cumberland Road, West Side.
Move to introduce.
Second.
Joyce Anne Yelton.
Good evening again. The item before you, again, is about 41 acres. It is located south of 206th Street, basically in the Noblesville township, which is part of our zoning jurisdiction for the city of Noblesville. The applicant, a little bit of background on this, the applicant originally back in 2005 did a planned development overlay in this area. It was for several lots. What eventually happened with that PD overlay is that PD overlay expired. So there is a time limit on PD overlays and if you don't pull the trigger on certain things, they basically revert back to the original zoning, which was our one single-family residential. That same applicant came back in 2016, did a slightly different proposal. And basically since 2016, there hasn't been anything done with that proposed PD. He recently has come back and basically wants to do a primary plat for this entire area. It would contain seven lots. Every one of those lots would be larger than five acres. He has been before the plan commission. before the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission did approve that primary plat, but we have to do a little bit of cleanup on the other end now, because what is happening is this property is still currently zoned R1 with a PD overlay on it. That means he has to develop it as that PD overlay was basically proposed. Staff is suggesting that we rescind that PD overlay, and then this property reverts back to being zoned R1, single-family residential. He can do his seven lots that he is proposing there. Again, there's, he is quite a ways away from being annexed in the near future into the city limits. We don't have any utilities out in that area, so he basically is on well-inseptic anyway. Most of the surrounding area here are larger lot subdivisions. He actually has built a couple of those homes that is in this area, and he does have some interest for those larger than, larger lots of greater-than-five acres. So Plan Commission did send this to you with a favorable recommendation for adoption by a nine in favor and zero opposed motion.
18 years, right?
I'm sorry?
2005?
2005 was the first one, and then he came back in 2016.
Mr. Air.
Mr. Von Sauer, would you like to speak? Hey, Dave, you come all the way down here from Cicerone, not talking.
Get your passport stamped on the way out.
I just wanted to see if anyone else on the board still, but I started this.
I am.
Mr. Air.
Yeah, we've got one.
Good evening. Paul Von Sauer, 1105 Bearcove Drive in Cicerone. Yes, hopefully third time's a charm. Obviously, the market's changed a lot in the last 18 months. People want larger lots, tired of small subdivisions. So by the time I looked at it, if I put all the roads in and storm sewer in, price just become unreasonable for 10 lots. I can get seven without all that infrastructure. The market's changed, so I'm just trying to hit the market, and that's pretty much it. So I don't plan on coming back.
Second reading, I understand, but I'm right now.
You currently have any, any of those sites already sold, pre-sold?
Potentially four, yes. Pretty sure on three, yep.
Beautiful part of Noblesville, too. Any other questions?
Beard won't be quite as long.
It may be more gray.
Any other questions? See you in two weeks.
All right, thank you.
Counsel to consider ordinance 86-12-21 and ordinance amending ordinance 31-7-93 for approximately 199 acres known as the Meadows in the 10-400 block of East 191st Street.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Joyce Anne Yellen.
This is a, another request to basically amend the Meadows PD ordinance to remove a portion of the 199 acres. So basically, this is the area that is outlined in red that we are referring to, as well as that little area that's outlined in yellow. This map here probably shows a little better what is going on. So over the last 18 months to, or so, the HOA has worked with Mr. Cooper, who currently owns this parcel of property, as there was discovered that they had landscaping that they had on his property, they had property that they didn't have landscaping on, that supposedly originally showed up as being their parcel of property, and the area that is basically out here in front, again, they've not been doing a whole lot with. So they basically, I'm going to say traded Mr. Cooper, kind of straightened out this property line between the two. You know, will be maintaining all of the landscaping that is in this area, and in exchange, this parcel of property here basically now has come to Mr. Cooper. So staff is asking, again, that we amend the original PD, which was adopted back in 1993, to exclude this parcel of property here so that Mr. Cooper can eventually possibly build another house on that piece of property. Currently, if you're, if you look at the aerial photograph here, this is the larger house and barn that sits in towards the rear of the property. There is another residential structure here. He would hope to eventually, he did propose a primary plat, again, at the Plan Commission, which was approved. He also had to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for some variances from development standards, but he eventually would like to create a lot here for this existing house. His house would remain on a lot, and then this over here would be created as another lot. There is a potential for some building onto this existing house here, but until we get the plat done and get the zoning cleaned up, he really cannot apply for any building permits at this point. And Mr. Cooper is in the audience. Should you have any questions of him?
Here.
Ms. Yellen, is this property currently annexed in the city?
Yes.
So it is serviced with city service?
Yes. It is annexed into the city and has been for quite some time.
Any other questions?
I think it's a good trade. Makes sense.
Mr. Cooper, would you like to add any commentary? You don't have to. Any other questions? Okay, we'll see you in two weeks. Proposed development presentation. Counsel to consider introductory information for proposed residential planned development on approximately 30 acres containing 185 townhomes, 36 cottage homes adjacent to the northwest intersection of Greenfield Avenue and Bowden Road. Steve Harden, attorney.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the city council. For the record, my name is Steve Harden. I'm a partner in the law firm at Paveri Drinker. I'm pleased to be here this evening with, representing Four Star, and with me from Four Star tonight is Melissa Gerard and Brian Gray. I recognize Brian from his 27 years of service here in the city engineering department, and so any engineering questions on this project, I refer to Brian as we go along, so. Thank you for having us here this evening. This site is the 32 acres located at the northwest corner of Greenfield Avenue and Bowden Road. And on the aerial location map, you can see Ruoff Music Center, which has the Christmas lights out there. If you've been by there lately, you can see them as early as 5:00 in the evening now. And then we have the Autumn Breeze Apartments are right to the north, immediately north of the site, up here, and then around in orange, that is the Deer Path neighborhood. And last we looked, those homes have about an average assessed value of about $180,000. And then to the, further to the south will be the northern reaches of the Hyde Park Development that we've talked about earlier this year as well. So here's the overall concept, oh, turn this way, so. Here's the overall concept plan. I'll go down through each one of these in just a moment, but again, this is orange here, Greenfield Avenue and Bowden Road, Ruoff Music Center over here to the east, to the north is Autumn Breeze Apartments, and over to the west is the Deer Path neighborhood.
Steve, if you go back, just while I'm looking at it and thinking about it, are those access points on the Greenfield, are they full access, proposed to be full access?
Yeah, so they're, they're...
Oh, there's just one. I'm looking at the other one up on the further up.
Full access. There was thought, if you remember probably a year ago, there was a proposed development on the same site that mixed commercial and residential, that had multiple entrances on the different roads, and that is partly what ended up having, making that challenging to work with, was the multiple entrances and the commercial development. So this is all, you know, that commercial component's not involved in this, but these two entrances are full access, and they meet the requirements that the city has for that agreement with the access points for this development. There will be some more detail as we go through TAC, and Brian Gray and the teams, engineering departments work through the left turn in and the access points for that as well.
Thanks.
Thank you. So on the north end is where we have the townhomes, and those are about 185 townhomes. As you can, as we talked before, these are for sale townhomes, and those are going to be both two and three bedrooms, and expected to range between 1,550 square feet to 1780 square feet, and those home sale prices are expected to range from below 300s to 330,000. Both the townhomes and the cottage homes are all rear-load garages, and so as you look at the site plan, you start looking to see what's been done here. There are no rear of the homes facing the perimeter. Those are all the front of the homes, and the garages are in the back. These are public streets through the main part of the development, and then these are private alleys or lanes that speed the rear-load garages.
Harden?
Yes, sir.
Where's your extra parking in those townhome projects?
I'm glad you asked that question, sir.
You knew I would, didn't you?
There was one thing I could add, so, it's here, that's right. So we have, you know, the parking requirements approximately are for a multi, for a townhome, it'd be, I don't know why I keep doing this, maybe it just has to catch up.
I think if you put your pen down.
Wow!
So there's 100... Anyone that's married knows, it happens all the time. So 185 townhomes, generally that'll be, the minimum required parking is 1.9 parking spaces per unit. For the cottages, it's two parking spaces. So we have two-car garages, and we have two-car driveways, so that's already, we doubled the required parking, but that's not all. We also have, on the public street components, those all have, allow, wide enough to have the normal street parking, but we have approximately 90 guest parking spaces in addition, so that's what you'll see on the plan. So in these areas right here, right here, right here, there's three areas, and we have a whole, along this northern part, our guest parking, guest parking, guest parking, guest parking, guest parking, and we have some down here as well. But the bulk of those, as you can see, are up in this area where the townhomes are. I think I circled most of those. There's approximately 90 guest parking in addition to the on-street parking, and in addition to the four spaces per unit on the units. And for the cottage homes, down here in the southern area, these are going to be three bedrooms, and they're expected to range between 1,250 square feet and 2,200 square feet, with a price range from the mid-300s to approximately 385,000. Again, these are all front-facing along the perimeter with rear-load garages. The target market for these are, you know, will be available for whoever would like to buy them. There won't be restrictions, but it's anticipated from the developer and builder that these will be aimed at the millennials that are looking for, as they move through the continuum, they want to own, but they don't necessarily want to have to maintain a large property. These will be maintenance-free, so the townhomes will be, the HOA will take care of both the grounds and the exterior siding, as well as, and the cottage homes will take care of the grounds, exterior, individual homeowners will take care of their own homes, but otherwise, it will be a maintenance-free neighborhood for targeted towards those young professionals who'd like to stay here in Noblesville and grow their family and careers here.
How many units did you say the cottage homes were?
Mr. Air, we have 36 of the cottage homes.
Those pesky millennials.
Pardon me?
Those pesky millennials, yeah.
I thought the guy before said they were one of the large lots, and they're retired.
Yeah. I can't afford one of his homes.
So we have also approximately a half-mile perimeter asphalt trail, but it's a missing piece to the trail network that's out there in this area. And this is, there's also, someone had asked the question when we were talking to some of the council members about, how does somebody get from here to Hamlet Town Center? There is a trail along the east side of Bowden that then gets you to the trail network to get to Hamlet Town Center, so you can bike and walk today on trails and sidewalks that are there, so that's good. There's approximately two miles of new interior sidewalks as well. Also included for you, the proposed perimeter landscaping. It has a variety of mounds and plantings that are going to be reviewed in detail, with additional exhibits showing some perimeter streetscape looks of the landscaping, and then the amenity areas for this neighborhood. There's a, in the central, center area here, there's a central gathering area with walking trails that gets you to that area, and then also continuing that outdoor theme down here in the southern part, there's a gathering spot here that would be, have a lit-like structure on the top, would be a fire pit, and there are also planned a couple of bocce ball courts. I'm only going to mention Connor for one reason. That was a suggestion from one of the council members, and the team thought that was a really good idea, and so it's in there.
No pickleball?
Anybody else have other...
Pickleball up the street.
The team's taking notes, so. We also have our Allegro of Noblesville signed in the package. That's most of the information for you. We're planning to go to the Architectural Review Board tomorrow, and then the Plan Commission in January, and then eventually back to you all. If everything goes according to plan and the city likes this project as much as the Four Star team does, they would hope to be starting development activity later in 2022. Thank you very much. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Inspiration for the name?
I wanted to have an opportunity to invite Melissa Gerard up to the podium, and Brian, you can come up as well for Donner. Couldn't have asked for a better question.
I'm happy you asked that, because that embodies the whole spirit of this community. So a part of... Oh, sorry, Melissa Gerard. I am very delighted to be back in Noblesville. I've spent a lot of years here. I cut my teeth and learned the ropes of planning and zoning from the esteemed Doug Floyd, and spent many years working out of 970 Logan Street. And actually, I didn't realize Mr. Von Sauer was going to be here, but he was one of my old clients when I was working with Mr. Floyd, so that's why I followed him out. Not quickly enough. But anyway, we thought a musical theme was appropriate, given its proximity to the music center. My daughter played piano for a lot of years, and I loved hearing pieces played Allegro, because they were bouncy and happy and fun. So Allegro means lively, and that's kind of the spirit we want to convey for the target market of this product, is happy, fun, engaging, community place, and bright and cheerful, so.
I like it.
Good question, Ed.
And all the street names go with that theme, too. I very carefully picked all the street names.
You have Troubled Clough Court, or?
No, not Troubled Clough, but one of our main streets, I hope anybody can pronounce it, is Vivace, which means bright and cheerful as well, but we have Fresco, which means fresh, and we have a lot of names that are happy musical terms.
Were these a part of, I saw you late, are these the townhome projects?
Yes, those are the latest elevations we have. I just received them yesterday. They are similar to what we filed in the past, but we have some more details now. There's different components for four, five, and six-unit buildings, but there, you'll see there's a lot of variation on the front. They're two-and-a-half stories, basically, obviously, as Mr. Harden stated, they're all rear-load. There's, in the back elevation, they would be three full stories, but they're going to be graded so that the front is going to be basically two-and-a-half stories. And we're going to be naming the bocce courts the O'Connor Courts.
I'll be there to drink some wine. I'll be there to drink some wine and throw some bocce balls.
And do you have to go off 146th Street?
Right, I'll have a, I'll have a designated driver.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next step, what's the dates for this? How does this proceed through?
Yeah, A R B tomorrow.
Tomorrow, we'll be at the A R B tomorrow and then plan commission January and then eventually back to the council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counsel to consider interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Noblesville and the City of Fishers for sewer services within Noblesville municipal boundaries.
Good evening, counsel, Lindsey Bennett, City Attorney. I am still very excited to present this item to you. Um, as the title suggests, this is interlocal between Noblesville and Fishers. Um, as you all probably know, Fishers is acquiring, um, Hamilton Southeastern Utility within the City of Fishers municipal boundaries and they're acquiring HSC's Certificate of Territorial Authority, um, in Wayne Township in certain areas that by contract are to be served by HSC, uh, for sewer conveyance and then treated by Fishers. Um, let's see, got a couple of exhibits here and do better whenever I have a, a picture to look at usually. This is an exhibit to the interlocal, this is the area that Fishers is acquiring. So some of this area is actually within, um, Noblesville municipal boundaries. So, um, because some of that area is within Noblesville municipal boundaries, they, uh, asked us if we would be willing to enter into an interlocal agreement for them to serve this area. Um, again, I just wanted to clarify that this area was never Noblesville's to serve. This has been HSC's area to serve and sent to Fishers for treatment, so we are not losing any area. Um, in fact, if we don't sign this, then nobody will serve this area because it's, um, HSC is right now, once it is purchased by Fishers, it is Fishers to serve. Um, but by law, in order for them to serve it, they have to enter into this interlocal with us, um, with some of these terms clarified. And there are no, there are no customers in this area currently and really the only change for us will be that we will talk to Fishers about serving this area rather than HSC. Um, we've had a robust conversation with Fishers, um, about this area, um, as it is undeveloped and, um, Fishers is also trying to develop their area that's south of 69, so we wanted to put in some protections for Noblesville, um, and they understood our concerns with, uh, some competitive advantage and, um, the development that's going to occur out there at some point. So we also put in the agreement that they would keep any information that they received from developers, that their sewer utility receives from developers, they would keep that separate from civil city and they've also agreed to freeze their connection fees for three years, so any development that, um, occurs within the next three years out there will have the same fee today as it will, or I guess the same fee then as it will today. So they're not raising fees, they're going to keep fees the same, uh, the fees are the same on the north and south, um, they're not raising any fees for their own customers, HSC's customers or this potential area. And as, as we were discussing what this was going to look like, they mentioned that they might have some additional capacity in this area. And so, um, you know, that kind of perked our ears up and we started talking about what those possibilities might look like, um, north of 146. And so we, um, came up with this area too, uh, that is not actually what they are acquiring. This is an area that we are in contract with HSC. HSC would be the, uh, municipal, would be the utility that would serve this area and then send it to Noblesville. So what we've talked about is HSC still being the service provider for this area, but instead of sending it to Noblesville, they will send it to Fishers. Um, Fishers is going to do a master plan of this area and in its master plan, it's going to include the treatment services to this area too. So the conveyance will stay with HSC, the, the only difference is it will flow to Fishers rather than flow to Noblesville. The term of the agreement is 25 years with automatic renewals of successive 25-year terms. If no development has occurred by 2031, so 10 years from now, Noblesville can terminate the agreement by Fisher's service area and then find a way to serve the area itself. Also, as you know, Fishers took a similar interlocal to their council a couple of weeks ago. They had some deadlines that they needed to meet for their acquisition. Um, they got it approved in a substantially similar form, but I did want to let you know that the, the version that you see tonight is the final version. Um, it will be the one that, uh, Fishers will sign and, um, it will be effective upon Fishers closing of their acquisition at the end of this year. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
The, um, the map you have up there currently is not actually a part of this agreement?
What is, I'm sorry?
The map that you currently have up there is, is not a part of what we're actually agreeing on today.
Yes, it is, um, part of that.
It is part of that?
Yeah. Yeah, something, um, that we hadn't contemplated in the original discussion, but whenever they mentioned that they had some additional capacity that they thought they might have in this area, because they currently have an interceptor there, their Mud Creek interceptor, um, we thought, you know, it just makes sense if there's already an interceptor there, that that area flowed to Fishers. And, um, I'm not an engineer, but I think Jim Hillman would tell you that, uh, it makes more sense from an engineering perspective too, just the, the way gravity works in this particular area. And it will allow us to have some development out there a little bit earlier than we had expected.
So help keep our capacity for other uses in our current. Good.
President, just one question, Lindsey, that, the fee structure won't imply to area two, just area one, correct? Because there's really nothing out there now.
Right, yeah. So, um, there will be fees out there. We haven't talked about what those are going to look like, but I expect that they will be pretty much what is, um, already in the agreement that we have with HSC. Um, I haven't seen HSC's agreement with Fishers for this area. There's a lot of part, moving parts here in different parties, so HSC is going to have to enter into a wholesale agreement with Fishers for area two and so they will develop those fees at that time, but I, I imagine they will be very similar to what, uh, we have in our agreement with HSC, which is very similar to what, um, the, um, acquisition area is going to look like.
I think, I think you hit a little bit on it before, when Fishers, at the end of three years, raises their fees, they have to be parallel so they don't have a competitive advantage.
Right. Yeah, they're, they're going to have to be identical raises.
Also in the, the area two map, our agreement, the other map basically takes in the whole south end of, that down to I-69, correct?
I don't have this one.
Right, so if you, if you lay the other map on top, it, it, put it back out, basically this whole property on the very south end is a part of the agreement.
The mile and a half is the same.
Mile and a half on?
Yes.
From Oleo to?
Yeah.
Atlanta?
Over the county line, correct?
So, yeah, that's all within our municipal boundaries.
Any other questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I would move that we approve miscellaneous number one as presented.
Do you have to read?
Do you want me to, um?
Read it?
How about counsel to consider interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Noblesville and the City of Fishers for sewer services within Noblesville's municipal boundaries?
Second.
There's a motion to approve the interlocal cooperation agreement for sewer services in a second. If it is a hand vote, all is in favor, please raise your hand. Zero.
Thank you.
That has been a lot of work and it's really.
Yes.
I never thought I'd see somebody as excited about sewers as Jim Hillman, but thank you for your enthusiasm. Counsel to consider amendment to the 2022 meeting schedule. Evelyn Lees.
Evening. In order to accommodate plannings, uh, many meetings scheduled that they needed, we passed our, uh, meeting schedule for 2022 in September, I believe. And then later, the administration settled on city holidays for 2022 and they chose to make a New Year's holiday on January 3rd, which had been our organization meeting. We can't have that on a city holiday, that's the only change. We're changing the organization meeting by one day. So I'd ask that if you could just amend that schedule, then we'll get it advertised, we'll get invitations sent out.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I would move that we approve, uh, amend the 2022 meeting schedule as presented.
Second. Motion to amend the 2022 meeting schedule in a second is a hand vote, all is in favor, raise your right hand. Eight to zero. Counsel to receive notice of the 2022 appointments. Ms. Lees.
Uh, this is just providing notice to you, as we do each year, that, uh, council appointments to the Parks Foundation Board, the Plan Commission, and two appointments to the Redevelopment Commission will expire at the end of the year. Uh, so, uh, the new, new appointees will be up for approval at your next meeting so that we can get them installed in time for the new year.
Any questions? Okay. Counsel to consider transfer TA 1221, an appropriation transfer to the general fund for facility maintenance needs. Sam Beras.
Um, thank you, council members. We have a few, uh, transfers on the agenda tonight. Um, as you know, as we approach the end of the year, one of our office's primary responsibilities is making sure that all of our departments are, uh, living within, uh, the budgets that council has approved for them, um, and taking any corrective action if, uh, an action is needed. So some of those actions are smaller or very technical in nature. Those have been handled by OFA and will be reported to you at the next council meeting. However, several of them exceed the $50,000 threshold or are on issues that we deem more substantive in nature, so that's what these three items are. Um, the first, TA 1221 deals with, um, maintenance depart, the maintenance department's budget. Uh, it covers, uh, provides $60,000 for, um, underbudgeted or unbudgeted costs, mostly for utilities for city facilities such as city hall. Um, also, um, some project work that was not anticipated at the time they did their 2021 budget, so there's been some issues with, uh, you know, moving around the, um, workout area in the basement as we've been building out the police, uh, de-escalation, uh, training tool. Um, in this case, the $60,000 of funding is actually coming from within the maintenance department's budget, but it was originally budgeted to the 400 series for capital project work at the Public Safety Building. There's been a, uh, project, uh, that has to do with the chiller, at the, uh, the rooftop chiller at the Public Safety Facility that's been delayed until next year. Um, so basically they're using the unused funding, um, for a different purpose than it was originally anticipated in the 2021 budget, um, and so this is asking you to approve that appropriation transfer. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I would move that we approve transfer TA dash 12 dash 21 as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve transfer TA 1221 is a hand vote, all is in favor, raise your right hand. Eight to zero. Counsel to consider transfer TA 1321, an appropriation transfer in the Parking Meter Fund for unbudgeted parking services expenses.
Thank you. So both of the next two transfers are related to the Parking Meter Fund. Um, we've broken them into two separate actions because they deal with, um, substantively different, um, issues. This first one, um, essentially handles $25,000 of costs that were not incorporated into the, this is budgeted from the police department, um, actually, um, out of the Parking Meter Fund in 2021. Um, this includes, um, uh, first and foremost, parking lot rental fees, um, that we pay, um, not super, uh, into the particulars, but this is, I believe, at 8th and Clinton. Um, this is.
Ninth.
Ninth and Clinton. Um, and so, uh, we are currently renting those spaces and that was not envisioned, incorporated into their 2021 budget. Um, and then the second component is, um, for credit card convenience fees that we are charged when people use credit cards at the city's parking kiosks. My understanding is, is that we are working our way out of that arrangement into something that is more, um, uh, efficient or effective from the city's perspective, but nevertheless, um, those fees have been charged to the city this year and so this, uh, covers those costs. In this case, there is a contingency within the Parking Meter Fund, so we are asking you to transfer $25,000 from that contingency to the police department's budget, um, to cover these things. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
President.
Yes, sir.
I'd move that we approve transfer TA dash 13 dash 21 as submitted.
Second.
There's a motion to approve transfer TA 1321 in a second is a hand vote, all is in favor, raise your right hand. Eight to zero. Counsel to consider transfer TA 1421, an appropriation transfer in the Parking Meter Fund for installation of security cameras at the Levinson parking garage. Sam Beras.
Thank you, council members. So as mentioned, this covers $43,000 for, uh, security cam, cameras at the Levinson Garage. Um, because it is a parking garage, um, we see, uh, the Parking Meter Fund as clearly an eligible place to pay for these expenses. Um, don't have the exact figure in front of me, but there's a couple hundred thousand dollars in the Parking Meter Fund that hasn't been, uh, included, you know, as part of the, the budget process, so, um, essentially, uh, what we're doing here with the actual budget action is we're, we're paying for it within the existing budget again, um, this time, uh, because there's not sufficient contingency to cover the $43,000, what we've done is we're taking, um, money that was originally budgeted for a parking enforcement officer, which we do not currently employ, so there's vacancy savings, um, from not having that position filled, and we're reallocating that 100 series funding, um, to the capital outlay, um, portion of their budget, um, so that we can pay for the cameras. Happy to answer any questions?
Question?
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I'd move to approve transfer TA dash 14 dash 21 as presented.
Second. Motion to approve transfer TA 1421 in a second is a hand vote, all is in favor, please raise your right hand. Eight to zero. Counsel comments? No comments?
Oh, enjoy the federal hill lights and the skating and the seminary park lights and Noblesville's lit up, so it looks great. Enjoy the ambiance and take advantage of all the things Noblesville's got to offer. There's a lot happening.
I think there are still four tours of Santa Claus this next weekend too, two on Saturday and two on Sunday, I believe.
When's the NPA tour?
Oh, that's a great question.
Saturday? Yeah, that's always, uh, a great event too. People do a lot, a lot of great work for that, so worth doing.
As Mr. Air says, if you can't find something to do, you're not looking. Any other comments?
Move to adjourn.
Getting adjourned.